All right, call to order, the April 27th, 2021, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Going to read our statement that maybe we won't have to read as much anymore. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18. And the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or by going online to www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, a transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible. If any members of the public would like to participate in any public hearings, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our planning director, Jean Enright. Her email address is j-e-n-r-i-g-h-t@northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay, all right. So I think we're starting with a bond release?
Hopefully do a roll call.
Oh, let's do a roll call. And again, if you're not actively speaking, please put your computer microphone on mute, your Zoom on mute, because we get some serious audio feedback here with trying to do this in multiple locations. Thank you. And we're going to call roll.
It's a roll call. Kelly Comier?
Yeah.
Kate Bagnesi?
Here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
Aaron Preston?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Aton Goldberg?
I'm here.
Okay.
Very good. Let's start with bond release. Kelsey Lane, William Gillen, request for a release of a $1,000 site opening bond and a $4,000 performance bond.
All right, so this is a definitive subdivision. It was a subdivision on paper off of Mollytown Road. It provided for two driveway access to Mollytown Road. And so the actual physical addresses are Mollytown Road addresses. Two houses have been constructed. We've received the as-built in your packet is the decision. The as-built, both health and conservation were required to sign off. And so everything is in order. I recommend the bond release. William Gillen is the actual original property owner, so that had been sold off, but the bonds were in his name, and there were two of them, a $4,000 performance bond and a $1,000 site opening bond.
Okay, can we get a motion to release all remaining bond funds?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Simons. Can we get a second, please?
Can we get a second?
This is Aaron.
Get a second.
All right. We're going to go with Aaron. I heard Aaron first. Aaron Preston?
Roll call vote. Let's start with Kate.
Yes.
And Peter?
Hi.
Aaron?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Bond release approved. Okay, next, continued public hearings. Three Gray Pond Road, we are continued to May 4th, 2021. Is that correct, Jean?
Yes, so we received at the end of last week another continuance request. Attorney Caffrey is on the call tonight. I suggested he be here in case anyone has questions. He's assured me that the plans will be revised and submitted for Tuesday's meeting, which means I need them by Thursday at noon. And I would just ask that you motion if you do agree to accept the continuance request.
And where are we at with the ZBIA?
ZBIA, they've...
It's been approved, right?
They've approved the variances, but they still need to get approval from planning, approval from the Old Center Historic District, approval from Conservation. I think that's it. And they have not applied to either Conservation or the Historic District yet.
Want to go through planning first? Which is fine.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Motion to approve the continuance of the Three Gray Pond Road public hearing until May 4th.
So moved.
Motion made by John. Can we get a second, please?
Second, this is Kate.
Thank you, Kate. All right, roll call vote. Let's start with Aaron.
Yes.
Peter?
Hi.
Kate?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Continued until May 4th.
Thank you very much.
Attorney Caffrey, anything else from you? We all set?
All set, thank you.
All right, have a great night. Okay, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendment articles, planning board report.
Okay, so I've included the planning board report in the packet linked to this agenda item. So at the last meeting, you approved, you recommended favorable action on the five planning board-sponsored zoning amendment articles, and you made favorable recommendations on the CPC and the Stevens Estate.
Okay. Has there been any public comment on any of those articles?
No.
Okay, great.
And so the hearing remains open? I don't know if you choose to close it. Typically, we hold them open up until town meeting, so I'll carry it on the agenda until that point.
Yeah, let's at least carry it until, let's revisit it at the meeting before. I just don't know if we're going to have a meeting that day or not.
Right.
We'll figure that out, but let's at least carry it until the meeting before town meeting.
Okay. The selectmen at their meeting last night also made favorable recommendations on those same warrant articles, so the planning board report has been updated to reflect those recommendations as well.
Great. Okay, so then we are on to the citizen petition, Article 10, Joe Finn and others, multifamily housing moratorium. Is that correct?
Yes, so this is an opening of a hearing, so you need to read your statement again.
Okay, so we're going to read a statement about this hearing being conducted remotely. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18. And Governor Baker's March 15th order, 22 of 2020, excuse me, imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If members of the public would like to participate in a public hearing, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to Jean Enright at j-e-n-r-i-g-h-t@northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Okay, so let's do this. Why don't we hear first from anyone on behalf of the citizen petition sponsoring parties or anyone who wants to speak about the article, and we can ask them questions. I do want to talk about the outside council opinion that we have. I believe Town Council is here as well if we have questions for her. And then Jean, at some point, if we do have any, I'll ask you if we've had any public comment or not, or if any's come in, just so we can take that if any is there. Okay, so is there someone that'd like to speak on behalf of the citizen petition?
Sure. My name is Joe Finn. First of all, I want to, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is, first of all, I live on Story Drive, and I think the first thing I want to do is to thank the chairman and the board for inviting me to talk about the warrant article that I filed, that will hopefully be presented to the voters in the upcoming town meeting on June 15th. And what I'd like to do is just to give you some context as to how this came about, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And how I got involved. And for those people who may have listened to the select board meeting, I apologize, because I'll be going over some of that same information that I provided them last night. So as you may know or may not know, I ran for the select board in the last town election. Now, prior to getting in the race, I talked to a number of people in town to better understand some of the issues concerning them in North Andover. And after that, I decided to run on three issues. And one was the rapid growth of North Andover. The other one was the need for affordable housing for seniors. I spoke with Irene O'Brien, the Director of Elder Services at the time. I know she's retired, and she had told me that there was, she thought, a definite need for that, and there were, I think, close to 8,000 seniors now in North Andover, which I was very surprised at. So that became an issue for me. And the third was to attract business to North Andover. And it's really tied to my first issue. I was trying to promote, really, business in North Andover to kind of have a balance against the large-scale housing developments that we saw or witnessed in North Andover. So, but at some point along the way, I put forth what I thought was a possible solution, temporary though it is, to reducing the impact of large-scale housing density in the form of a housing moratorium directed at multifamily dwellings. And as I interacted with hundreds of residents while going door-to-door through social media or through the press, it was clear to me that the moratorium was resonating with many of the residents. And that issue, it kind of got tied to me for the run for the board. And so it really overshadowed the other two issues. And I had complete strangers coming up to me while I was out on the streets telling me that they had supported me, that they voted for me or were going to vote for me because of the moratorium. So it seems as if Joe Finn became synonymous with the moratorium. And so, and at that point, when it came to the election time, there were almost 1,900 voters that voted for me, and I'm assuming that a lot of them was interested in the moratorium. I may be wrong, but there was no other issue really tied to me at the time. So now I think at some point, someone referenced the North Andover Master Plan. Now, I never heard of this, only to find out most people had never heard of it, let alone read it. But it's a 190-page document, as you know, and it has a lot of strategies and goals in there, one of them being housing. And the reason I mention that is because part of that report lists those things are a major concern to North Andover residents, and these are the issues that the people in the community were talking to me about. And the people, for the most part, tied it to the large-scale housing developments. So it wasn't a surprise, it was no surprise to me to find out that over three years ago, I think it was published in 2018, so it might be closer to four years, because they talked to the, I think they talked to people in 2017, but they said they were concerned with limited school capacity, traffic congestion increasing with more housing density, potential for losing natural resources and open spaces, and that had to do with the character of the town, and then deep concern over traffic and safety along neighborhood streets. Now, you probably didn't need the plan to know that, because most of us live with that every day. We see it, we experience it, but it was in the report. And so what I did then is I looked at the housing data that was provided in that plan, and I was a little bit surprised, but it said, based on 2015 housing data, North Andover has a healthy inventory of multifamily units. So I was a little surprised with that. So the thing, I said, what happened next after that? Because that was 2018. And I assumed, or I guess knowing that information, we may have had a pause, kind of what I'm offering today, but that's not what happened. Several large-scale market rate housing developments were recently approved, and they're going to come to market pretty soon, as far as I know. I think the permits were issued in either 2019 or 2020. But they were the West Mill Avalon Project, which is 200 market rate units, the East Mill, 140 market rate units, the former Knights of Columbus, 136 market rate units, Fajetta Farm, which is now obviously Princeton Properties, that was, it was just built, but that had 192 market rate units. So what we saw was 668 market rate units. But it was interesting, because all of that happened after we were told that we had a healthy inventory of multifamily units. So it was somewhat counterintuitive to some people when I talked to them about this. And of course, after these residents talked to me about the overcrowded schools and the overcrowded streets. But the interesting point in this, and the reason I bring it up, is because a lot of those residents that I talked to knew nothing about the 476 units that are being approved because they don't see them. When they talked to me, they were referencing Compass Point, Berry Farms, Fajetta Farms, and of course, they were starting to talk about the Merrimack College project, where we see the 1,641 units, the hotel, the dormitories, et cetera, that's going to go on with 114. But when I talked to them about other units that are coming on board, they had no idea. In fact, there are still people out there who don't even know about the Merrimack College project. So it was interesting to hear their comments and what they thought on this point. So you can see how we started to see the moratorium was kind of resonating with people. And I seemed to be getting more response as I ran for the seat. And I see it as maybe a potential momentum when the people find out about the 476 units, and they probably won't until you start digging, they'll see it. And I think then it'll dawn on them that we have a really large number of units coming in. And so ultimately, this is the issue I think that should come before the voters. And please understand, I'm not here to blame anybody, to say who may be right or wrong in this process. There may have been great reasons for that. I'm just trying to communicate some of the concerns by the citizens and why this moratorium came up. And so hopefully, what I'm trying to do is just get this to the town meeting.
Well, it's going to get...
And I'm hoping...
I mean, so your background is very helpful for how it came up. I mean, it will go to, it should go to town meeting. It's been submitted. The warrant article's been approved. I mean, the question before us now, or really, I see two things. One, are you looking for the planning board to support this? And the corollary is, does the planning board want to support this? So that's something that we have to discuss. And then two, what kind of shape should this article take? Because if you look at the, you know, the comments from our outside council, I don't think it's even in a position right now that anyone could actually vote on it. It'll go to town meeting, but it needs to be better formatted to at least make it something that people can have a vote on in the way it fits into our bylaws. So those are the two things. So I think the first thing we should talk about is, are you looking for the board to support it? And if so, can we ask some questions about how it's written, and so we can get a sense of if it's something that, you know, we'd like to support. Ultimately, we'll take a vote on that, and if the majority of the board wants to support it, then we will. If a majority doesn't, then we won't. Either way, it still goes to town meeting, just either with a favorable recommendation from the planning board or a non-favorable recommendation. But we're not the final say. It will go to the voters in some way to vote.
I appreciate that, sir. Is it possible for me just to talk a little bit about the study before we get in, before I address your questions? Do you mind?
Sure, which study?
It talks about a comprehensive study in the article. And what I'd like to do is just first talk about an interesting conversation I had with the town manager, Melissa Rodriguez, who is unbelievable, super. And I talked to her about the 668 market rate housing units, because I don't think she was in her position when it took place. I'm not sure. I don't think so. But I know she is focused on this issue, because I attended a meeting, what was on Zoom, and she had said this. She had said, we have seen a significant change in our market rate housing over the last few years, not only in single-family housing, but also in multifamily housing, which caused the delta for compliance and Massachusetts General Law 40B. And I think, also, we just brought somebody on board, I think it might have been approved by the planning board, to help with this issue. I don't know if she's a consultant or whatever, which might give you an idea of how big the challenge is, and maybe how big the issue is and how important it is. But I mentioned that statement, and I'll get to the study, because when you have a significant change almost in anything, I think it really affects, really affects just one area. In this case, she was talking about an aspect of housing. But I think it's reasonable to argue that you can also see a delta in many of the other areas, such as public schools, municipal services, the police and fire department. And I think this is where we get to that study in the moratorium. And so I just wanted to bring that up, so people understand that we, there could be impacts in there, hopefully, you know, that we see deltas on multifamily construction projects individually and in the aggregate on each of those issues stipulated in the warrant. So you can see the delta for each of these projects, Compass Points, Berry Farms, East Mill, West Mill, and thereby know what resources are remaining to deal with any additional housing growth, and hopefully, great for some, for planning purposes. So I just wanted to mention that. It's simply a pause that allows us to better understand the impacts on the significant change that we've experienced or are experiencing with the large-scale housing, and time to understand that what is the best solution when it comes to large-scale housing density in the future. So I thank you for allowing me to talk about that. I can address your first question. I would absolutely love the board to support this, but please understand, I'm not really here to persuade the board, but I'm hoping that they will support it. I'm here, hopefully, to get this to the town meeting because of the number of people, and there are a lot of people who had an interest in this moratorium. And so, and I think there's good reason listening to them. So that's what I'm hoping for. I didn't get the second question, but I'd be happy to address it.
Okay, so the second question was, did you see, there was a letter from our outside council regarding the formatting of the article, and that it, her opinion was that it's not really in a position that it could be voted on as is? So something, my question was, is that something that you plan to address, or would you like the board's assistance in addressing it, whether we support it or not, in making it in a format that would be appropriate for town meeting? And if Mr. Nicky has here, hand is raised in our Zoom fashion if...
Hey, Tom, sorry, there's a lot of feedback on the line again. It's hard to hear.
Okay. All right, how are you now?
Still really crackly. Is anyone else on the line having the same problem? I'm just thinking, no? I can't hear either.
All right. Try again.
So the phone number ending in 89, that is not muted.
That's Aaron. Okay. How are we doing? Is this better or worse?
It's a little bit better.
Be easier if we were all in person. Okay. Okay, so my...
You might have to come closer to your mic.
So my question was about formatting, whether or not you were going to look to change the formatting of this to make it more ready for town meeting, or if that's something that you wanted the board to assist with?
I have spoken, I have spoken to Melissa, and she has referred me to Mark DeSalvo about these issues. I haven't read the legal, I guess, description that just came out, but I am aware that some things need to be changed, and I'll be looking to do that, hopefully, with the help. I think Melissa mentioned Suzanne also at some point to me, to get this ready for the town meeting.
Okay, fair enough.
Excuse, excuse me, Aton, I wonder, Nicky, I can answer that.
Okay, good, thank you.
It was a typographical error. It should be, the motion will be to add the section, and it should be Section 195-10.2.1. And that is consistent with the formatting. If you look at the zoning bylaws, Section 17, there is three dots. Should have had a dot 1 at the end.
Okay, so, I mean, if you guys are going to clean it up and get it ready, that's fine. I just wanted to just make sure everyone knew what everyone was expecting. Okay, so let's do this. Let's take questions or comments from board members, and then we'll see, and then we'll go to if there's any public comment. So, does anybody, would anybody like to start? Kelly?
So a question, I'm not sure who the right person to answer this is, but it's a question around what have, what these, the point two, what hasn't been studied yet? Because it mentions a comprehensive study, unless the series of items, services, schools, emergence, public safety. I'm just wondering, because I know a lot of those items in pieces and parts have been done as we look at different proposals before us. I'm just looking to, like, what additional data would we get in that comprehensive study that we don't already have?
I think it's a two-step process here, and you probably, I think maybe people on the planning board have a better idea than I do. But for me, it's to understand some, let's take a look at water and sewer. The capacity, it talked about the master plan that we had a surplus capacity back in 2018. And so I think what we're looking to do is to find out what the capacity is, the delta in that with each project, and then the delta with the aggregate in mind. And that can also serve for pointing purposes to determine how much capacity we have left to take on other housing, large-scale housing developments. Now, I have asked for some of the impact statements for these projects, and what I want to do, just for myself, because someone had mentioned that this had been done, is to put them up against each other and see if I see any, in all of these areas, have we seen a delta in all of these areas that we're talking about? And that's what I have asked for right now. But that's, that's, that the thinking in terms of the comprehensive study.
So when you say water and sewer, do you mean like capacity from the lake? Is that what we're talking about?
I think, yes.
Okay.
In terms of the water, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Kelly?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Peter?
I'll pass for now, Aton.
Okay, let me know if anything comes up that you want to come back to. Aaron? You're muted, by the way, Aaron, if you have questions.
I do have questions.
Go for it.
Thanks for reminding me I got muted. Yeah, so essentially, I guess what I'm curious about is really what the effect of this moratorium would be. Essentially, all of the larger multifamily developments that the proponent mentioned earlier, they went through a voting process in town meeting to change some sort of zoning, whether you're talking about the mills in the overlay district. I think I remember there being a zoning issue, or zoning change for Fajetta Farm, maybe I'm wrong on that. The property, former Knights of Columbus, that was a vote that went before town meeting. So there have been opportunities, I guess my point is, there have been opportunities for the people in town to act one way or another. What would this moratorium do, given that it seems like the largest-scale developments usually require a zoning change vote at town meeting?
I think when I, well, I can only tell you that the people... And because maybe it wasn't as much of an issue, but it seems to have resonated. So if I, if it gets to town meeting, you may see maybe different people showing up because they may have a different vision of what North Endover should be like. And so I, I, that's the only thing I can tell you, that there is interest out there and it may be a different interest and maybe because of a different vision.
But if, but if we're pausing development and we're looking to do studies, it seems like there should be a purpose to these studies. And it, I mean, I just struggle with, to Kelly's point, it seems like we've done a lot of these studies, either in the aggregate through the master plan, through the housing development plan, through, we're doing a watershed study. So we've done a lot of the studies in the aggregate, not necessarily just related to housing, but studying these topics. And then to Aaron's point, for each of these big developments, we've had either town meeting or months and months and months of planning board hearings. I guess I'm just not sure what added value this would have, given how much time and effort we put into each of these studies and each of these special permits for multifamily housing. What it really ultimately comes down to is that the ones that have been already passed would go forward most likely based on our outside council's opinion. So it really comes down to the Royal Crest, which we'll have to go to town meeting for a potential zoning change anyway. And it seems to me if it's 40B would most likely be, you know, at least those portions would, would not even be covered by this because 40B would, would trump our local moratorium. I, I just, it seemed, that and that there's no funding mechanism in this. So all of those things together, I guess I'm, I understand why people have the reaction that you're talking about because we have had a lot of building. And I think it's an important conversation to have and maybe town meeting is the only place to have it, but this particular moratorium doesn't seem to make sense to me to solve the problems or the alleged problems. Again, even with the, the comments about traffic and increased traffic and increased schoolchildren, I don't think the data supports that it's multifamily housing that's driving these things. I think the data would support that single family housing is much more the contributor to school aged children, for example. So I understand the sentiment. I think it's an important conversation to have about what is the future of the town. And to the master plan point, housing was the most divided topic, I think, that came up in the master plan. There was a, and it was like, half the people that responded said, no, we shouldn't have any more housing in town, no multifamily housing. And the other half were, we should have all, or a lot more multifamily housing because we need affordable housing and the only way to make a dent in it is through multifamily. So yes, I totally agree that that was a very, not divisive, but there were a lot of opinions on that that didn't agree. So I don't think they're easy answers, but I'm not sure that this frankly serves much of a purpose. Oh, that's, that's just my thoughts. At least some initial thoughts. John, any comments?
Yeah, Eton, I think you put it very well. I, I, I guess I would make the observation to the applicant that this will, this moratorium will have no impact on the three projects that have already been approved. They will move forward as is and as both Aaron and Eton said, it only indirectly will impact the Royal Crest project because the Royal Crest project has to go to town meeting anyway. So if this is intended to slow down or stop or prevent anything, it's not. It's not gonna have any impact on anything that we're aware of. It would only impact some other project that we're not even aware of today.
Well, for instance, John, under this proposal, a three family or four family that maybe is going to be used for, you know, affordable housing or maybe a senior housing project that comes along that we haven't, they couldn't come under this.
Right, right.
We don't know. And I feel like we're-
But, but I, but I suspect the, the intent, and like you said, I thought you said it well, is that everybody feels like there is a lot of multifamily housing, I mean, and they feel, a lot of people feel uncomfortable about it. And I, I understand that. That is what I think this is intended to try to stop, but like you said, and I don't think the intent is to go with very small projects in the neighborhood that are well, like the one that, which street was it that we did, like about a year or two ago?
Middlesex, right?
On Middlesex. It was extremely good project. It would prevent something like that from happening.
The Grange is before you now. That's a three family multifamily.
Yeah. So we gotta be careful when we do this. I think you're right of the unintended consequences.
Is there a funding mechanism for this? I mean, this seems like it's a lot of work. These, these studies seem like worthwhile things certainly to have a handle on, but there's no funding mechanism in this either. So that concerns me. Again, I, I guess, I, I worry about unintended consequences. I worry that it's overbroad and I worry that it defeats some of the other purposes mentioned. And Mr. Finn talked about affordable housing and senior housing and I think that is a super important issue. At some point, I'd like to get back to our discussion about inclusionary zoning bylaws, like to get back to our accessory bylaw discussion. I know Salem just passed a new accessory bylaw or ordinance in Salem, Mass. There is a little, you know, has a large history to it. But those things I think are important to talk about and I think that, that we should get, but this would actually defeat the purpose somewhat of affordable housing because if we don't have affordable housing unless it's under a 40B project, you know, multifamily housing is where we're gonna get our bang for our buck in making affordable housing. Just limit some of that as well. I guess, I guess my thing is I think the planning board does a really good job. I know this isn't, this article isn't meant as a, as a dig on the planning board. I, I understand that. But I think the bylaws that we have now are very thorough for multifamily housing. I mean, for Avalon, we had months and months and months of hearings for Royal Crest so far, before we've even gotten to public hearings. We've had months of discussion and, and I think ultimately, as Aaron said, a lot of these go to town meeting for votes. So I think there's a lot of public process. I think there, we're trying to really focus on engagement, though I think it could always be better. So I guess I just, I worry about that this is somewhat of an, an overreach and somewhat defeats some of the stated purposes. So those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep. Well, let me take, let me just-
Number one.
Yeah. Let me just see if any other board members have any comments and we'll come right back to you guys. Okay. Is there, anyone else have comments before we get back to some comments from the applicants?
Eton, this is Kate. I, I have a couple of things. I do agree with the sentiment and the frustration of the proponent, but I'm not sure that a moratorium is gonna be what solves the problem, given the status of the already approved projects and the fact that the Royal Crest project is part affordable housing. And I do share some of the frustrations of what appears to be overdevelopment, but I think as a town and as citizens, our efforts might be better directed in how we can ensure that we have the funding and the support for the infrastructure and school growth that every, all of these projects and some put stress on the town's resources. So I'm not sure just putting a blanket hold is actually gonna solve anything.
So I, I think that's a really good point. I mean, I don't, again, I, I didn't get to see the Board of Selectmen meeting last night, but this is a important topic and to the extent of how are these things being dealt with, I think that would be something that it would be good for town management or Board of Selectmen. I don't know if there's, can be some sort of a report or some information given that the people could have a place to talk about this, other than necessarily this, you know, moratorium. So I, I mean, I, I don't think the, the conversation shouldn't end at town meeting with approval, not approval, but I think there may be other ways to try to discuss this issue. So I, I think that's a really good point. Thank you. Lynn, or, or Mr. Finn, if you have any other comments you wanna make?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
Okay. As far as the comprehensive study, we have never done a comprehensive study where it says how much water draw is going to be used per development, unless you have something that I've never seen. We are reaching capacity at our lake. We, last year, we draw down in three months out of the 12 more than we should. 10 years ago, we were only doing that one month out of 12. So the lake is an issue that we need to study and say, how much more can we develop our town? Can we put another 5,000 units in before we affect the lake? Or is it only 1,000? If it's only 1,000, is it fair to give all 1,000 to one developer and not allow any capacity for the rest of the town? We do wanna grow business, we know. We've never said how much Princeton's gonna take, how much Avalon's gonna take, East, West, Mill, and what impact those items are gonna have on municipal services as a whole aggregate. We always say it's minimal, you know, won't have much impact, but now we're looking at possibly four firemen, possibly four police officers. Well, we probably needed some staff for those other developments. We, when do we grow the fire station? We already know that we're pretty close to capacity on the fire station, not having one in our country. We've never done a comprehensive study that I'm aware of. We've never done a comprehensive study on the SOAR. We have SOAR releases. How much more of the releases are we gonna have when we have rain events? We've never done one on the roadway infrastructures. We've never done, and we've never done an environmental impact. You know, idling cars, we know has a huge impact and that was one of the items asked that they were gonna succeed with widening of the road. So it's not just a Royal Crest referendum. This is, was not intended to affect Avalon, the senior center, or the other projects that all came up pretty close together. But when we're growing faster than the state average by 60, almost double the state and 60% faster than Essex County and growing at 60% faster than the nationwide average, I think we need to take a pause and slow down, look and see how many units we can absorb on a yearly basis and come up with a growth plan like we developed before. This is not the first time we've had a growth plan in town. We did it with single families before and I think it's time we look at the multifamilies and say, if we build 1,500 new units aggregate in the next few years, how is that gonna impact other multifamily dwelling homeowners? Royal Crest has vacancy rates even with so many units being rented from Merrimack College. Princeton property, I did, figured out there was a 13% vacancy rate a few months ago. Berry Farm was doing pretty good at around a 6% vacancy rate. But we do have vacancy rates and what is this flood of these units gonna cause to the town? And are multifamily dwellings what really the next generation wants? Shouldn't we be finding a way to find, build single family homes, build ownership units? I know there's some ownership units proposed in the next development, but most of them are gonna be high-end units that aren't gonna be affordable for most. And most over 55, we need is ownership units. We need over, we need housing units for our seniors that they can own, not rent. So I, I don't believe the comprehensive study has been done. I believe that we have not done it as an aggregate and I think that's very important that we plan ahead before we get too far along because we, we just added a lot to the pipeline. We're all aware of what's in the pipeline.
Do you have any sense of how much that would cost the town?
Honestly, we did a school impact study without have costing the town. This doesn't have, who says we have to pay outside consultants? We are very smart people in town and I don't know, think we need to actually hire someone. I think we could go down to the DPW and go down to the water treatment plant and look at the filings they do every year with the state and look at the capacity and look at the average usage per home and say, okay, well, this is how much we have. This is how much their residential unit uses, this is how much commercial. I mean, if you wanna build commercial units, commercial building, retail, we also have to have water for them.
So how long do you-
We don't want to be-
Sorry. How long do you think that would take?
I think it'd be, I think it would be around a year and I think that's why we proposed two years. And if we had it done sooner, we could take the moratorium off. And this isn't gonna slow down. I mean, we all know that someone could stop permitting now. It might take them a year. Even Avalon didn't pull their, is, you know, a lot of these companies don't even pull their permit for a year after they have their special permanent hand. So this probably will not hold up anybody.
So then why do it?
Because we need to have a plan in place before someone does apply. If, if someone applied now, we didn't have a plan in place, then they could build another 5,000 units. What happens when one of these large farms wanna build and we don't have the money to buy it?
I, I, I guess my point is if, if, I mean, if you want, if we want, if the town wants to do the studies, then they, the town can do the studies. I mean, there could be just a, a budget thing for doing the studies and I guess that you don't necessarily need a moratorium. I mean, especially with how long everything takes, how long one of these projects takes to go through the different departments and things like that.
Well, we, we do because there's certain ways that if they apply first, that this would not backdate. So if, you know, if someone applied and there wasn't a moratorium, then we couldn't, if, say we, say we had 5,000 units get applied for, how can we stop them? And we all, and we don't intend for this to stop 40Bs. Developers don't wanna build 40Bs because of the profit limitations. You know, there's 20% profit limitations on market rate. When was the last market rate, I mean, ownership 40B that was permitted? It was over 10 years ago. And when, and all these properties are all rental properties too, which there's nothing wrong with rental properties, but it's because of profit. Most people wanna live in town, they want to own. We know that. They're settling for renting. So we need to, we need to come up with what we want as a town to build, not what they wanna build. We do have that right, town's limited building limits. And I think we really should strongly consider in looking at what we want for, what we need and what we want as a town. And do we want 1,000 rental units or do we wanna try to figure out to find some over 55 ownership units for our seniors? Do we wanna find some, you know, smaller housing that young people can afford to buy, not $500,000 townhouses or maybe 600,000?
Yeah.
The only way that'll, the only way that will happen is a moratorium and then we set the limits for the growth plan, like it was done prior.
That's the part I disagree. Man, I think those are, are, are important goals. I just don't think those things are mutually exclusive. I don't think we need a moratorium to set those goals and, and, and to look at those things. I don't, I don't see those as hand in hand. But, okay.
Okay.
Understand where you're coming from. Mr. Finn, any other comments you would like to make? Actually, before I get back to you, Gina, any public comments?
I have two.
Okay. So why don't we take the public comments and then we'll go back to Mr. Finn for the kind of last word.
So the, they're both from Andrea O'Donnell. Her first email was, not all of these recent developments have gone before town meeting or required so wing changes. And then put in parentheses, the mills. I understand the point is not to impact the current or in process projects, but to give the town some time to absorb all of the recent and in progress changes and have the ability to confirm what all of these developers have, I don't know, developers have posited for strain on resources. We have to take them at their word when they come with numbers on town resources such as schools, water, sewer. A pause is a good idea. Andrea O'Donnell.
Okay. Well, I know in the fiscal impact study for Royal Crest, which we're gonna discuss next week, I did see, and I think you've provided some data and they presented, and some data's been provided, I forget by whom, about numbers of school age children that have come from various projects over the last several years. So I understand Mr. O'Donnell's point that we get numbers in advance, but we are actually looking at those numbers and seeing, do they match up, how many we have? We are, when these new projects come about, trying to factor in what's come before, what's on the table. So we are actively looking at those things. It's not just a one-time snapshot. So I understand Mr. O'Donnell's point that we get numbers in advance, but we are actually looking at those numbers and seeing, do they match up, how many we have? We are, when these new projects come about, trying to factor in what's come before, what's on the table. So we are actively looking at those things. It's not just a one-time snapshot.
Right. And I will say, the mills, there have been numerous zoning amendments associated with the mills, one of which was the downtown overlay district, sub-district A. It was some time ago, I think it was in 2016, but that zoning certainly, when it was put in place, allowed for the Avalon project to eventually be applied for.
Correct. So the Avalon project itself didn't go to town meeting, but the ability to have multifamily housing in that location did several years before.
Yep. I think 2016, if I remember right.
Okay.
All right, and we received a second from Andrea O'Donnell.
Okay.
Actually, it looks like she sent the same one to me twice.
Okay. Same comment. Okay, thank you. And if additional people want to make comments as we continue with these hearings, that would be great. Okay. Any members of the board, before we go back to the applicant, for any final comments?
Yeah, you Tom, this is Peter.
Peter, yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to say that I do, I do find the notion of a comprehensive study to look at the cumulative impacts and importantly, sort of remaining capacity in multiple dimensions, whether it's potable water, sewage systems, schools, whatever, I think could be a very useful tool for going forward. I can also understand the appeal of moratorium. I mean, it's very, you know, it's, I think it's easy to comprehend it's a moratorium, but I think I agree with others, but that doesn't seem to be a very useful approach in this case. And from what I'm hearing, it almost sounds like the moratorium is being used in order to get the comprehensive study. So again, the comprehensive study has some appeal to me. I'd be interested in hearing what other members of the board might think about how that could be done.
So I was going to ask a question about that. I kind of like that idea. Do we, I don't, I think the answer is no, but does the planning board have any budget for studies? I know some towns do, I don't think we do, right? Have we ever had that, John?
No.
Until you make the developer pay for it.
Correct, but, but, but I do, the point of, I mean, I'm not sure which came first, chicken or the egg, you know, moratorium versus study. Seems to me that the study is required under the law, these things, to get a moratorium. But putting that aside, I actually think the study is worthwhile. But to John's point, we usually have it through the developers, through a specific project, and that's not always, it gets us some of the aggregate, but it doesn't get us all of these things. So I wonder if it's worth a discussion if, and I don't want to put the town manager or anyone on the spot right now, but is it worth a discussion of, is there some room in the budget for something that could be done, whether it's through the planning board or through planning, to do something like this? If it can be done with in-house, too, as well, that takes time from our staff that's very busy, but even just having a part-time person or someone focused, or a grant, could we apply for a grant to do some sort of comprehensive study? Those are good questions to ask.
Hey Tom, if I could just make one comment?
Yes, please.
I think we're of similar mind here, but just one thing you said, kind of, I feel like I have to comment on. I don't really think that this would be something that we would necessarily want to explore with the planning part of the study. I think instead, what I've heard earlier is that this could be a town-wide task. Yeah, you know, if that's possible. So for example, DPW would have their piece, schools might have their piece, planning would have a piece. But I think it might be a better way to frame and articulate what we're, what we're trying to describe, is it's really a town government-wide effort as opposed to any one branch, because I would need input from all the town departments, I would think.
No, understood, but somebody's got to, my point is, somebody's got to spearhead it, somebody's got to lead it. It's got to be under somebody's jurisdiction and budget to have responsibility for making such, something happen. I mean, I think it would be an interesting grant proposal, to be honest.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about it, and I trust you're going to carry this over to the next meeting, so I can, we can talk about it internally, but there's numerous plans that we have updated, and what I'm hearing is someone's looking to kind of aggregate those into one. And so we have a housing plan, we have a master plan, we have facilities master plan, I forget if we're on number two or three, but the fire station discussion that arose during the master plan, that's being discussed as part of the facilities master plan. School expansions, they're all under discussion. I mean, it's not as if we're not studying these topics, but I understand that there may be a purpose of kind of pulling them all together into one comprehensive document.
And, but also, but, but I think also with a focus on not necessarily, what are we doing, what would we like to do, but how have the things, how has the changing demographics of the town, the change in, and I don't think it necessarily has to be limited to multifamily housing, but we now have more, you know, we just did the census, how many more people do we have than we had 10 years ago, and what do we have coming, and how does that impact all of that? So yeah, putting that all in one place and kind of answering that really broad question in a comprehensive manner.
Yep.
It seems like a good idea, it's not an easy thing, I don't think. But the data, a lot of the data is out there. I think that was Kelly's point at the beginning. I think a lot of the data is out there. Some might not be, right? We may have to do some, look at something with the sewer or the lake and stuff like that.
And Lynn's right. I mean, the water treatment plant reports to DEP every year, kind of what we're permitted to draw, what we actually draw, and the variance to that number. And so the data exists, it's a matter of how do we present it. And as these projects go through the planning board, we did peer review water and sewer for Avalon, for Princeton, for Amazon, and granted, we're, we're peer reviewing the design of that, but the design considers the flow and the usage. And no red flags were raised with any of those projects, saying, wait a minute, if they're going to use that much, we're going to run into a problem.
Well, again, and just with the water and sewer, I mean, new housing coming online is certainly a factor. So is new commercial development, so is climate and weather. I mean, we can't necessarily pin it down to one thing that has changed consumption, you know, there are a lot of different factors to be considered in there. Okay.
All right, so I have one more comment from Andrea O'Donnell has come in. It reads, "R-E colon, numbers, colon, point being, they are guesses. Many of these properties aren't even built nor fully rented." Andrea O'Donnell.
Okay. Peter, any additional? I think that was a very helpful comment, appreciate you adding that. Anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. Finn, yes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, this is Joel Finn again. I appreciate all the comments. I have a question for you.
Sure.
And that is, because I've heard of all the reasonings why you wouldn't have the moratorium. When talking to people, and I guess just hearing their input, would there have been a need for a pause after the 2018 report came out saying, "We have a healthy inventory of multifamily units"? And yet, at the same time in that report, it said, "We have, we have problems with our school capacities, traffic is an issue," and they even said, "traffic with more housing density and traffic in the neighborhoods." Now, if you look at your house, your master plan, there may be one strategy, I don't even know if there is one for schools, and that's two-thirds of your budget. Traffic, it's addressed in one sentence, and it talks about discouraging traffic from going down the side roads for traffic. That, you know, so I'm just, I'm just wondering, at that point, would you have had a pause when you were told, when we were told there was, there was just enough multifamily units at the time? Because after we were told that, we went on and we have 668 market units. So I think at that point, that might have been a good time, too, to have a pause. And that's why people are probably thinking right now, it's a good time to have a pause, because we didn't have it when they thought we should have had it back in 2018. And if you told them, well, we do all the, we do all the studies that you're saying, this is, this is part of the issue, I think.
Well.
It may be, and that's, I think that's what they're looking at and how they're seeing it. And keep in mind, they haven't even seen three of the developments yet that are, that are coming online. I think, too, when you look at the, the master plan, there was somebody in there that was stated. It said, "Some schools are near at capacity. Even with the recent expansion of the early childhood center and the consolidation of all kindergarten classes in the early childhood center, there was not much room for increased enrollments and class sizes to remain, if they're, to remain at their desired numbers, since affordable housing for seniors is needed, which is what I'd love to have."
Me, too.
Incentives could help to meet this need while avoiding additional impact to the school system. That was back in 2018. Now, I don't know if it was feasible, but that was absolutely probably the right way to go. And the moratorium today does the same thing, because we're looking at a, we're looking at affordable housing, and we need time to take a look at that. And so that's a byproduct of this, absolutely. But the people who really got hurt in this were the seniors, because they were the ones that needed it more probably than anybody, yet we went out and got 668 market rate units, and there's nothing for the seniors. So this moratorium as a byproduct helps them. And so that's, you know, I just want to.
How does the moratorium help seniors, though? To get more senior housing, we would have to build multifamily senior housing.
Can you do affordable housing for seniors?
As a multifamily, sure. I mean, yeah.
Does moratorium affect affordable housing for seniors?
Only, it does unless it's a 40B project. You can do affordable housing that's not a 40B project.
Because there was, there was, there was a very, and I throw this option out there, and I was listening to the Community Preservation Committee, and it talked about the Housing Authority, and I don't know if that's an option either, where they had a conceptual design for one of the properties, which would be, I don't know, 100% affordable, and I don't know if that comes into play at all as an option for the seniors. But I think also, you mentioned the zoning where it gets approved. I think in the report, the master plan report, it talked about how North Andover has 21 additional, I mean, individual base zoning districts, and this is a large number of zoning districts for a town of this size, and I know what, and I know we're trying to get more, and I think you had said something about, I don't know, AUDs or ADUs.
Yep.
But I think, talking to people, they see this also as a way to really increase congestion of traffic and not lessing it, which is what the zoning has to do. So it's, I mean, as I talk to people, this is their sense. I mean, and I know some of these things are in the strategies in the master plan, because people noticed those, but that master plan is made up of just not the residents in part. And also, there was, there was, there was actually, there's a list of the five strategies that receive the least amount of support from the residents, and really, four of them apply, because Osgood is on there, but in terms of how they handle it. But three of those have to do with zoning. And so those three that are least supported go into the master plan as a strategies, and the strategies aren't weighted at all. So what they like to say is that, hey, we're doing, we're doing these zoning things, and the people like it because it's in the master plan. It's the exact opposite in terms of this report that we see. So I think those are all the things that they see, and I think now it's starting, it's starting to, to come home for them. They're starting to put it together when I'm out there, because they don't even know about these projects. And so that's why we see this, this desire for the moratorium. I can tell you this, the 1,900 votes I got on most, I don't know what those votes would have been if we had, if we had construction on those three, on those, on those three market rate units. I'm thinking it's more. I think you're going to have more of a momentum as people understand what's going on, as they see this construction going on. And so that's, that's, that's this whole purpose of it. I don't know what you have in the pipeline for proposed units. The people, we didn't know that back in 2018, we probably never, ever imagined that you would be putting together 668 units after that. But now, I think people are starting to pay attention, and that you will see more activity at the town meeting when you see that. I don't know if you knew about the Merrimack College project at the time that these things were being introduced, and whether or not even the town, townspeople still don't know about that, but were they aware that, hey, we've got something coming down the pipe? And I don't even know if you even considered that at the time that we took the 668. So there is, I'm just trying to communicate their concern in what, in what they're seeing.
Right.
Hopefully, we can get this to the town meeting.
So I, I think we understand the concern. The question is, one, does this article address the concern? And I don't think it does. And two, is that concern based on, on factual information, and what is the actual factual information on that? Because some of the things that you mentioned, I don't, I think, assume certain conclusions. So you mentioned that overcrowding in schools, certainly a valid concern, something that we consider in every proposal that multifamily that comes before the planning board. But I think there's a not necessarily factual assumption that multifamily housing is driving the increase in schoolchildren. I don't think that's factually accurate. Again, you know, traffic, we do traffic studies for each one, traffic is definitely a concern. And should we maybe study traffic in the aggregate, kind of like as Peter mentioned? I think that could certainly be a worthwhile discussion, but I don't think that a housing moratorium necessarily gets you there. I think the issue of affordable housing is sort of conflated, and to be honest, I think a moratorium defeats the purpose of affordable housing. I think there are other ways that we can get more affordable housing, more senior housing. I would love that. I've been a strong proponent of that on the board in trying to come up with different ways. So I just don't know that this article gets you to actually answer the concerns that are being addressed. But it will go to town meeting, we just, you know, it needs to be refined. I will leave that to you and people that are working on it, to work with the moderators. If you want any input from the planning board on that, just let us know. And what we'll do is we'll continue to have this discussion and keep it open for meetings leading up to town meeting. That doesn't mean you have to be at everyone or that, but we want to let people, now that it's been opened, if people want to submit comments, we'd love to hear comments, comments for the moratorium, comments against the moratorium, questions, comments about a potential study. If people have them, please submit them so that we can discuss them, and we'll just continue to carry this to the next hearing. And that's, that's where we'll go. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Can I ask one question before we leave?
You may. Sure.
Do you, do you consider projects that are in the pipeline prior to approving these large-scale housing developments that all, or is that you just take it one by one, and as they come up, you just, you just take them?
So, so, but I assume you mean you as the planning board, not just me individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, so most of the large projects will have peer review studies done that will incorporate both projects that have been done, as well as projects that are upcoming. Usually that is for traffic, as well as for fiscal, stormwater as well, Jean?
Stormwater.
And stormwater. So yes, they generally incorporate the projects that have come before it and known projects that are coming after it. And frankly, when they don't, we give them a hard time, because we say, you can't just base it on a snapshot in time, you got to give us what's happened before and what's happened after. If you look at, next week, we'll be discussing the fiscal impact study as to Royal Crest, both what their expert produced, what our peer reviewer produced, and questions that we have, that will certainly come up. Traffic and school data and other data for what's come before and what's in the pipeline.
And so I would just add, so when the multifamily's application is processed through the planning board, peer review on fiscal impact goes out, the applicants suggest how many, what the impact is, we peer review that, and we also include the school department to weigh in, to, to provide input as to whether they agree with the report as well.
Also, if I could, one last question. I was asked this, I was out on the road, when we talked about these developments, and one, someone asked, did, did we know that the... And someone asked, did we know that the Merrimack College project, did we know about that at the time that we approved of the 600? Now, he was, because I advised him that we've got more coming on and that was the question. And I said, I don't know if they know about that. And then the next question is, if, he asked me if it was, he goes, should that have been told to us when we go to any of these meetings so we know that there's larger projects coming down the road? I don't know if you can answer that or not.
So I think, one, I wouldn't call it the Merrimack College project just because it's, I'd call it the Royal Crest or Aimco project, just because Merrimack College is a part of it, but they're not the ones running it. But to answer the question, I think it only considers projects that have submitted applications? Is it, yeah, it's only if someone submitted an application because up until that point, unless they've actually had discussions with the planning board or submitted a application, it's frankly not really even a real project because, I mean, there are people studying and looking at properties and what they can do with them all the time. I know there have been talks for years about ways to update Royal Crest, but until this most recent one, it really hasn't come to much fruition. And even still, we're still only in the discussion phase. It hasn't even had a public hearing yet. So it wouldn't have been considered because it wasn't an officially presented project at the time. I don't think it was even, yeah, it wasn't considered at that time. It wasn't known as an officially considered project then.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Okay. All right, let's continue this until next week.
So I have a draft calendar in the packet. I laid out this as the opening hearing night, continued to May 4th, which is next Tuesday, and a third meeting on May 18th, which was going to be town meeting date. So your planning board meeting would expand from a traditional like half hour before town meeting to a full hearing. And I would anticipate a recommendation being made that night in order to have a recommendation in time for the board's select board.
Okay. Okay, so that'll be the plan. We'll have it on for May 4th. If there's more to add, great. If there's not more discussion, then we can just keep it on. But I encourage members of the public, if anyone who has an interest, if they want to submit comments, please do so. Thank you, Mr. Finn. Thank you, Mr. Nicky, for presenting and giving us information tonight. Appreciate it.
And thank you to the board. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Next topic is, so Mastart discussion is postponed until May 18th?
Yes, so in the packet, only because I've received numerous comments from residents regarding Hillside Road and the potential, one resident wanted to potentially open that up again. They seem to have a neighborhood meeting possibly. And the vast majority of people who have communicated to the board is that they prefer it left as Mastart has presented it to date and not to open it up. This project isn't necessarily before the planning board. I've tried to explain that to people. But I did put them in the packet because I responded that they will be included tonight and MastDOT would be here tonight. I'll carry them all to the May 18th meeting as well. And MastDOT should be prepared at that time to provide feedback regarding meetings they've had with, I guess, both Aimco Trinity and the McGarries most recently. So we'll look to meet with them on the 18th.
Okay. All right, so now we will turn to, all right, 7:48, okay. So we will turn to Royal Crest Estates, 128 Royal Crest Drive, Trinity Financial, Jim Keefe, proposed master redevelopment plan for the property. Fiscal impact school capacity study, continued responses to general questions, comments. As I said, I think we're going to take the fiscal impact school capacity study up next week at that point because we were trying to get all of the peer reviewers and experts together one night so that we could have presentations from both, ask questions of both, just similar to what we did with the traffic study and traffic discussion. And I know someone couldn't be here tonight, correct?
Our own peer reviewer couldn't, no, I'm sorry, Trinity's representative couldn't be here tonight. Our peer reviewer can attend next Tuesday. So everybody can attend next Tuesday, but I just caution you, our peer reviewer is not available till 8:30.
Okay.
And so we'll just have to line the agenda up to match that.
Okay, so maybe we'll start a little bit later. We'll see what the agenda looks like before making that decision. But so we'll talk about the fiscal study. I would really encourage everyone, board members, to really try to review it thoroughly. I know I've gone through it once and I want to go through it one or two more times so that we can really ask good questions of both reviewers so that we can really get to some of these important issues that are addressed in a lot of the comments and addressing some of, even some of the stuff we talked about earlier. So, great. Okay, so Jim or Mike, anything to talk about before we jump into the comments?
I think, Mr. Chair, that we should probably pick up where we left off, going through the list of comments and we'll take it from there.
Fantastic. Okay. All right, starting with comment number 12 on page 12 from Andrea Ciallo McSweeney. As an abutter to the Royal Crest property, I have some concerns about the proposed plan. First, as a high water table area, I have real concerns about both the construction phase and load the buildings will environmentally put on our property. There are also major concerns about the location of the proposed Merrimack dorms location and parking lot, causing both noise, excuse me, and sound pollution for our relatively quiet neighborhood. Lastly, the hotel concept proposes significant safety concerns with its proximity to the neighborhood and schoolyard. I think redevelopment at an appropriate scale is in general welcomed, but I would hope that input from those directly affected by the development could have say on the size and location of some of the proposed structures of the property. Small tweaks like flipping the location of the dorms to the non-residential side of the property could be a solution. Please let me know the best way to voice and monitor how these concerns will be addressed going forward. The Trinity response was, our engineering team is taking great care to ensure that there'll be no negative impacts related to drainage and stormwater. And we have taken note of these suggestions and others and look forward to working with our neighbors on tweaks to our plans that meet both of our needs. So I'd say to Andrea's question about the best way to voice these concerns as you're doing it, I would at some point like to talk about, and I know, talk about the location of the dorms. I know we do have Merrimack representative coming at some point.
May 4th.
May 4th, okay. So I think that would be a really good time for us to talk about the location of the dorm, why it is where it is, are there concerns putting it somewhere else? What do we have about noise and sound and things like that? So let's get some answers to some of those questions when we talk with Merrimack next week. And if you continue to have questions or concerns, keep raising them. This is a good opportunity. Also, if you feel like you want to talk with the developers offline, you can do that as well. You can do that as well. If you need help with that, let us know. Okay. A comment number 13, Lynn Rednicki. How many units are being sold in the breakdown of type, over 55, townhome, mid-rise, et cetera? The plan calls for 263 townhomes, most of which will be for sale. Where are those units located on the proposed plan? The townhomes are located on the perimeter of the site, keeping more in scale with the neighborhoods. Where are the estimated property boundaries of the condominium units being sold and the Merrimack units on the site plan? The townhome zone is indicated on the plan. The Merrimack student housing is in a single set of interconnected buildings at the front of the site, directly adjacent to the campus across from Route 114. There have been changes to the program summary. It would be helpful if each summary has a footnote on the change and reasons for the change, as there have been at least eight new summaries. There were two increases in square footage and one in the number of units. What are the reasons for the changes in yellow and which buildings were these on the proposed master plan? Are there any more planned increases in size? The program has, the answer to the program has been consistent from the beginning, the major change of the program summary was due to a request from the board to include student housing units in total number of units. Continue on some other comments from Mr. Rednicki. In reference to the program summary attached for the Royal Crest Trinity Financial, I have a question that I've not been able to locate within the documents submitted to the planning board. I understand the 40B component of the project is for 385 rental units and allows the town to count all of them towards our affordable housing stock despite approximately 75% of them being market rate. I'd like to know the breakdown by unit size bedroom count for how many market rate versus affordable within the 385 units 40B. The exact unit mix has not yet been finalized. Unit mix is envisioned to be consistent with the overall percentages of market rate to affordable. I'd ask, is there a timeframe where we could expect some more clarity on that?
So this is, this is Mike Lozano. I'm getting a little bit of feedback. You know, we do have draft or unit mixes that we're utilizing right now. We can't...
All right, so let's everybody mute.
So if that, they'll get in that feedback.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Hold on a sec.
Still not able to hear. How was that? A little better? Little better, but not all the way back. So...
I don't know what else to do, so you can try, Mike.
Still no good.
Each, I think the last one, you moved the microphone closer to you. I think I heard the comment from Jean and that seemed to help.
Yeah, so John, your microphone has to be closer to you or else that's causing some of the feedback. It's also either put forward or...
All right, let's try.
Try again.
Got a lot of feedback.
All right, so I received a message earlier that it comes through clear as could be on NAcam, whatever that's worth.
Can people hear the NAcam mic?
What was that?
This is Jim Keefe. I gather, I was thinking maybe my computer would be more clear, but I guess not.
We're good right now?
Yeah, I think now I think it works all right. Works all right for me as well. Whatever happened, it now seems to...
Talk fast.
All right, so we do have a draft unit mix that is available. You know, we're such early days on this project that it's of course subject to change, but I can provide that to the board just for reference at this point.
Let's try to work on getting that sometime in the next few weeks when we start really talking about the fiscal impact. I think that could have an effect. So I think even if we could have just kind of an estimate, that would be helpful.
Yes, absolutely. We can provide that.
Okay, great. All right. Okay, now moving on to page 15, Karen Como. I'm writing to express my concerns with the potential development of the Royal Crest Estates. I recently moved to North Andover in November 2020 from the city of Methuen. We moved because we liked the small town feel of North Andover and that it was still a quaint town. I'm completely opposed to the potential for a hotel to go up. If people are traveling here for business or visiting students at Merrimack College, there are several other hotels in the radius where people can stay. The hotel could potentially bring in easy access for human trafficking and narcotic activities. In addition, the town does not need extra retail space. There are several businesses sitting around town with empty lots. Retail apartments and added dorm and hotel will increase the traffic tremendously, not to mention that the school is already busting at its seams with the amount of overcrowded classrooms. The town just built a large apartment complex on Osgood and I hear Avalon is in the works as well. Why do we need an additional apartment? I feel terrible for the neighbors who will be directly impacted by the noise, traffic, congestion, et cetera, right behind where the proposed plan will be built. This is a disgrace to our small community town and all people care about is making money and not preserving the community feel itself. The comment from Trinity is, please refer to the statements made above, but as for the hotel, we would not consider making the investment we are prepared to make in the hotel. If there were the slightest chance, it would result in the terrible conditions described above. I would just note that, again, one of the things we're going to be weighing is the appropriateness of the density proposed. But we do have to remember that there are, and we'll talk about some of, a lot of the fiscal impacts next week. And I mentioned that because some of this talks about, you know, having a hotel in town and not needing it because there's other hotels in other towns. Hotels, meals taxes, rooms taxes, those are all things that provide real financial benefit to the town. So I'm not saying that's the reason we do something is just for that. But if we're talking about schools and we're talking about infrastructure and stuff like that, added tax base is important. Having more people in a centralized location, this is something we talked about at length with the Avalon project, actually helps business. It helps business here, this area at Royal Crest potentially. It helps business throughout the town. It's not the people that live there, don't just stay there, they'd actually go out and actually spend money in other places in town. So there are trade-offs, of course, but I just think we need to also note that there are benefits as well as costs with increased development. Okay, 16. Christina Dennis. I am writing with concern about the proposed project at Royal Crest Development here in North Andover. I was alerted to this development through a Facebook group interested in making the plans public. I understand that the proposed development is being contracted by Merrimack College. I also understand that the inspiration for the redevelopment of Royal Crest is due to current failures of infrastructure. I am first concerned with the current residents of Royal Crest. Royal Crest rental units are modestly priced compared to the Princeton and Berry Farms rental complexes. It seems the current residents will be forced out if construction proceeds and forced to rent a smaller or more expensive unit if they want to stay in town. That's huge disruption for families we know are living there. The response was, the Trinity Aimco team greatly values its existing residents, some of whom have lived at Royal Crest for years. A phasing plan has been developed that mitigates the impact on existing residents and as North Andover residents, they may benefit from a local preference insofar as accessing the affordable units that will be built as part of the proposal. Trinity and Aimco have extensive experience in large redevelopment projects such as this and will ensure that the existing residents are well accommodated throughout the process. What further troubles me about this proposal is the replacement of residential complex with a hotel, campus, housing, retail space and rental apartments. Why is a housing infrastructure project being, and just one of the comments above was that this is a Merrimack project. Again, to be clear, it's not a Merrimack project. There is a proposal for a Merrimack dorm, but the project is not being done by Merrimack. What further troubles me about this proposal is a replacement of residential complex with a hotel, campus, housing, retail space and rental apartments. Why is a housing infrastructure project being revamped as a hotel, retail, rental space? Why is a residential complex not being placed with a residential complex? Answer, it mainly is, the hotel, retail are relatively small components. Question, who benefits here? So I would say certainly there's benefit for the developer in the type of financing and rents and things like that that can come along with a mixed-use development. I also think that the town also benefits from mixed use. One of the concerns that has been addressed is how many housing units. So one of the ways to reduce housing units is to have more retail, things like that. Hotel, which doesn't have, school age, children burden, things like that. Also, one of the things as a planning board that we've been trying to encourage is mixed-use development because it's a good tool for developing a good cross-section of housing and retail and tax base to have not just all business, not just all residential, but to have a mix, especially in the same place where they can be interconnected. It's actually a good planning strategy. Is this about student housing? If so, perhaps Merrimack can contract with the owners of the new vacant residential rental complexes in town. Brand-new residential living complexes are advertising vacancies of eight to 20-plus units. Retail space along 114 and 125 and 133 sits empty. So the response is that Merrimack will be making a presentation to the planning board soon so we can certainly ask them about... so we can certainly ask them about developmental thoughts for other places in town. But I think there is some draw to having it certainly right across the street, both for them as well as for students, as well as probably for a good portion of people in town that may not prefer to have a building here, a building here, a building there, all over different places in town. It may make more sense to have a centralized location. There's another, there's a comment about fiscal, so we'll get back to the highlighted comments fiscal. Jean, we'll get back to, correct? After we talk about that. So we'll get back after the, the comment in gray after we talk about the fiscal impact. So why is further development for residential rental and retail space even being considered? I see the only benefit is for the builders, not the residents, not our tax load, not our town infrastructure. Response, we believe the fiscal impact study, which is currently being reviewed by town's peer reviewer, will clearly address the concern raised above, so we'll talk about that next week. Ms. Dennis concludes with, I do not support the proposed plan for the Royal Crest Development. Thomas Dugan, number seventeen on page sixteen. All right, before I get to Tom's, I gotta take a drink. He is always thorough. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to submit comments tonight regarding the redevelopment of Royal Crest. My questions and comments are as follows. Can you please provide a comprehensive municipal approval timeline for the project, including all necessary approvals with municipal boards, planning board, conservation commission, and if this project will be brought to the annual town meeting or a special town meeting? Correspondence from the town manager of the project proposing suggested it be taken up at a special town meeting in September. Can you confirm if this is still the plan? All right, so they're deferring to the planning board. So there is no, um, definite plan of when this project may come before the town. It will not come before the town at the annual town meeting in, uh, in June. Whether it will be taking up at a September town, special town meeting, a future special town meeting or a future regular town meeting, I do not know the answer to that. We don't have an answer to that, right?
So recently, we had discussions about possibly October instead of September, if it was to make it to a town meeting. And the reasoning is public hearings would then occur in September as opposed to in August. So we wouldn't want public hearings in August because many people are away for the summer. Um, and so it would line up for three public hearings in September, potentially having to add plan board meetings to accomplish that for a October town meeting. Again, only if we successfully get to the point where we have draft zoning to present.
So there is the possibility of an October town meeting, a special town meeting. And so we're working to maybe make that a possibility, but there's nothing set in stone, and we'll keep updating as we get further along in the project. I appreciate and applaud the chairperson and board's commitment to transparency in public communication. However, transparency is not releasing large technical documents to a Google Drive or simply hosting websites and meetings via Zoom. Can you please commit to hiring at the project proposing expense an independent author who can translate technical information? For example, the traffic studies, financial impacts into plan language documents suitable for individuals who do not have extensive engineering, financial or other expertise. In regard to meetings, a number of communities are using charrettes?
Charrettes.
I'm not familiar with that, what that is.
Just small group pocket meetings with visual aids and get feedback from people.
Okay. And other similar forums online and publicly socially distanced to discuss and evaluate large projects. Can you please discuss how this could be done? We've had held town meetings. We should be able to coordinate in-person meetings for a project of this magnitude. Can you also please publish one comprehensive Google Drive to the town website for this project, including all relevant documents? Commit to hiring. I don't think we're going to do that. Meetings, Jean?
So there is a website on the Community and Economic Development Division. It links to all meetings, to all minutes. It has all the relevant submittals that, for presentation material on the website.
Okay. And in terms of having, um, forums where we can engage in, um, back-and-forth discussion, we are working on that. I think there's a strong likelihood of starting those potentially towards the beginning of the summer. And especially now with new guidance coming out from the CDC and coming out from Governor Baker, it looks like a lot of the restrictions are going to be lifted, at least by, you know, around August first, assuming, you know, trends continue. So I think there's a strong possibility of those sooner rather than later. We're just working to finalize the details. So as soon as we have details on those, we will make announcements, but we do have plans in the work because I think we all agree that some is lost with the, without the actual back-and-forth and, and with, with people. Can you please request that the Community Development Office and MPO publicly provide by the end of January updated statistics on housing and industrial, commercial space in town and the region, including Salem, New Hampshire? Specifically, residents are concerned about the capacity of the region given the number of recent housing developments, e.g. Avalon, Kitchard Crossing, Barker Farms, Salem, Lawrence Riverwalk, and the planned regional developments in Haverhill, Lawrence and Salem. How do we, as a town in particular, individual residents going to town meeting, evaluate if there's the capacity to support these developments? Uh, I mean, we'll discuss some of that as part of the fiscal study. I'm not sure that there's a great way to get a complete answer to that question. But we will make discussion in the fiscal impact, and then we'll do the best that we can to make an informed decision. Can you please request that the Community Development Office provide an update of how this development will impact other municipal planning exercises? For example, the development of a town green could shift development from our new and old town centers to this location, thus eliminating one of the primary goals of the master plan. How does the planning board and ultimately town meeting evaluate the impact of this project to both the new and old town centers as well as other commercial planning efforts in our community? Further, our primary water supply was significantly stressed this year, and we are currently undertaking a watershed assessment. How will this development impact our water supply, sewer capacity, and who is specifically responsible for evaluating if the lake and/or other water supplies can support this and other planned developments in town? So going backwards, we did talk a little bit about that tonight. You know, getting, um, the DPW and the Water Department, you know, do work to get information. Um, and we are doing stormwater reviews for this project. Terms of impacts on new and old centers, commercial planning, I don't know. Anybody have any thoughts on that? It seems kind of speculative to me. John, any, uh, it seems to me that this is more of a campus that will draw from the people there, will also draw maybe people to the retail and the restaurant and hotel, but I don't see that it would have a negative impact on other locations in town. In fact, having more people probably balances that out. But I'm not, I'm not sure that there's a good way to actually, I don't know how you study that, but...
No, I, I think it would have a marginal impact, if at all, in existing places, really. And I think you're right, there's, there's also a reverse effect that the more of mass you have, the more you keep it local anyway.
Matthew Iorio, number eighteen on page seventeen. Hi, Jean, apologize on the double up in emails. Erica, my wife and I are playing a bit of catch-up as we unfortunately just learned about the Royal Crest redevelopment. We have listening to the planning, um, or meetings tracking back to December first and to solidify our concerns and questions that we'd like documented and addressed in the February second meeting. Sorry, Matthew, we're going to do this a little later. You can scrap Erica's previous email and exclusively use this for the two-two meeting. We would particularly be interested to hear the board's input and get responses from Trinity Aimco. Walking path. The walking path is too close to Quail Run property lines. In the twelve-one planning, um, board meeting, it was exposed that the Trini Aimco felt even considering include Quail Run Road in the diagram presentation. Thank you, thanks to you for calling them on that. Trinity Aimco conveniently highlights building-to-building distances. More meaningful is not only building-to-property-line distances, but walking path-to-property-line distances. This is a major concern on many different levels, visibility, privacy, noise and security. Trinity says, we have heard this concern. We expect to respond to the request in subsequent iterations of the plan. Can we get a, um, hold on, let me go, let me just keep reading for a little bit. I am particularly interested in, to understand why the walking path juts out drastically, creating a wide loop right across Quail Run's property. Everywhere else, it appears the walking path is much closer to the Royal Crest. Similarly, we've heard this concern. We expect to respond to this request in subsequent iterations of the plan. Will Trinity Aimco be adding lights to the walking path? If so, how tall and bright? As noted above, our designers have taken note to ensure any site lighting is designed with our neighbors in mind. We will orient site lighting away from our neighbors, keep all lighting below the height of the tree line and fencing, and provide lighting only where appropriate for safety and security. We do not anticipate any lighting in the Quail area beyond what already exists in that area today. Rules and regulations regarding the walking path. And we will enter into dialogue with residents to turn other regulations as necessary. So do we have any, has, has anything changed? Do we have any updates that has been worked on at the working group? Or where do we stand on the walking path, I guess? I haven't really, I don't remember what the last iteration, to be honest, of the design, if it's changed or if it's still the same.
The conceptual plan that we have, as far, unless Trinity corrects me, I, I, we do not have an updated plan that revised the walking path. They have commented for several months that they've heard this and that they will reflect a change on an upcoming plan.
Okay. So have we reflected? Are we staying the same? Are we changing? Are we still reflecting? Where do we stand on the walking path and these concerns?
Uh, this is Mike Lozano. We are, we are working on that right now and expect to present something regarding the walking paths.
Timeline?
Within weeks.
Okay. All right, so I want to keep that on the table. I think that's a really important one. And it's something that we can really strive to get right, and I think it can make a really impactful difference on the project. And it's, it can be small changes that can really make an impact, so I would like to hear something back about what the changes were, or if there weren't any changes, why not? What was the thinking that goes into that? Because I, I'd like to see that on a revised plan, please.
We agree.
Okay. All right, so we'll hold you to that. Privacy and security. You know, one thing to mention, um, we did have discussion at previous meetings about fencing. And this comes up in a question coming up. So there, um, will Trinity Aimco be cutting any trees near the Quail Run property lines? The answer, we do not anticipate removing any trees along the property line. Will Trinity Aimco be adding trees to help with privacy? Open suggestions as part of the dialogue with residents as mentioned above. Will Trinity Aimco be adding a fence? Yes. We talked about that at a prior meeting. Uh, we're going to try for a consistent fence along the property for those who wish to have a fence. So that will be, uh, and, so that will be done. Franklin Elementary School is nearby where my children will be. I again think about security. Many are discussing the positives of walking path connecting the two. I would ask the board to consider the negatives. With all of these issues today with school security and shootings, why would we not want to police this? No comment other than to say it's possible that some of the neighborhood residents might want to maintain the current connection with the school as a convenient way to access the walking trail as well as the other sites, other amenities. We expect this issue to be resolved one way or the other after further discussion with the neighbors. So just as a clarifying point that there is currently a path from Royal Crest to Franklin Elementary School, so it's not a new concept. I do not want residents, visitors being able to see into yards as they walk, use the walking path, not to mention I do want to see them myself. I think about all the residents, visitors walking their dogs, and I haven't listened to dogs barking all day. As mentioned, we will be working with the butters to enhance the screening with the buffer if possible to promote more privacy. And then we also talked about fences. I also have concerns about the security of having random individuals walking around our property with two small children. No additional comment out there. Noise. Is the construction noise expected to interrupt children learning or others who work from home? Answer, no. Is there any data that can be provided on how far construction noise travels? Depends on the distance, the weather, the type of year, the vegetation, the type of construction. We do not anticipate any significant noise generation such as blasting or rock removal. I would like to better understand if and how long we will have to listen to construction for the website. It's an eight-year timeline. While this request may seem unreasonable, eight years is a long time, so I hope you can understand where we are coming from. So that is not an unreasonable request. As to noise, um, if it ever got to a permitting stage, all of our permits have noise regulations and time regulations regarding when construction can be done, things of those nature. And we're very sensitive to developers living up to those guidelines and rules. After construction is complete, what perpetual noise can we expect from outdoor music, dining, music? Outdoor dining, music, dogs, walking path? Is there any data on this based on similar peer developments? The people who will be living closest to you at Royal Crest will be mainly homeowners just like you, people who will have the same concerns about quality of life issues, dogs, outdoor music, car alarms, and like you will not tolerate. As I understand it, the, um, outdoor, any dining is, is in a separate location. Are there, I guess I do have one question. Are there, um, you know, proposed, um, in this area, along the borders, proposed, um, you know, barbecue grills or outdoor meeting areas, things like, things like that? Like, are there gatherings, are there gathering spots, one in general? And if so, where are they?
There are gathering spots, uh, small pocket parks. They are not in this area, and they are all internal to the site screened by other buildings.
Okay, thank you. In the planning board meetings, I listened to Trinity Aimco pat themselves on the back for how much they genuinely care about the budding neighborhoods and the concerns of nearby residents. Trinity Aimco claimed they would put a flyer in my mailbox. It was not done. They also claimed they would follow up, set up with an email. This was also not done. Finally, they would make a phone call to notify us. Also was not done. The board should be aware that while they claim their outreach has been sufficient, in my opinion, it has not. We unfortunately had to learn of the project ourselves through North Andover Mother's Facebook group. My wife is part of. That is regrettable. We have made a good faith effort to reach as many of your neighbors as possible. We are, this is Trinity's response. We are sorry that we have failed to connect, but we are willing to connect now and discuss any concerns about the project. A lot of discussion has been around the number of beds in the new Royal Crest project. Most important is not only the number of people to those beds, but on top of that, what about the number of visitors this will attract to the area? I think it is very safe to assume that having a walking path with nice landscape, ponds, restaurants, retail space, excuse me, will attract outsiders. This is of particular interest since the walking path is so close to my yard. For reference, we can see the Royal Crest neighborhood cars and parking lot from my back deck. I want a better understanding of the fact volume of walkers and noise. So I guess we're going to talk more about the trails, um, coming up, location. And if we could talk about if there is a way to estimate, um, visitors, we could talk about that. I mean, I guess our, where our visitor parking spots would be helpful. Like, are they along the trail? Are they not? Because that could encourage or discourage, you know? And I guess we should be thinking about whether we want to encourage or discourage, you know, use of this trail by people who don't, don't live there. So I, I think that needs further discussion. Trinity Aimco needs to provide a more clear construction plan. I suggest adding construction timelines to the diagram to better understand when and how long. Uh, so that's being worked on. Say we expect to start the first phase in the spring of twenty twenty-three and for it to be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-five. The picture from the website is really concerning to us. I'm sure you can imagine. Here we have a picture. Response, we actually think this is good and shows a wide wooded buffer with very little visual or other impact in the new buildings. Could you be more specific as to why you don't like it? We will take your concerns into consideration. Okay. Mary Lou Schallman. And I think my plan, just so everyone knows, is to go to nine o'clock and see where we are and decide based on that if we're going to continue these or move on, um, to, to next meeting. But we'll continue until, until nine, okay? Mary Lou Schallman, I continue to be opposed to the five-story buildings planned as part of the Royal Crest redevelopment. Finding none in North Andover, I took these pictures of three five-story buildings nearby on Merrimack Street, a few hundred yards from the town, across the town line. Please note the five-story parking garage is shorter than a five-story residential. Commercial building would be by about ten feet, um, as parking garage floor heights are lower by about two feet per floor than those other buildings which require pl... As parking garage floor heights are lower by about two feet per floor than those other buildings which require plumbing, heating and other infrastructure to run through space overhead on each floor. Is this what we want at the proposed location? It is what we will get. The response was the heart of the concept of smart growth is doing more with less. It's about being more thoughtful, how and where communities grow. Taller buildings are more energy efficient. They preserve more open space. If communities can no longer grow laterally, i.e. single-family homes on half-acre lots, they have to grow vertically. At Royal Crest, we have placed the five-story buildings in one concentrated area, mostly along what has been until now a forlorn stretch of straight highway. It is characterized in many locations with strip malls and other forms of sprawl. We are committed to ensuring that our five-story buildings will be hardly seen by any of our butters. They will cast no shadows on surrounding property, which is the usual objection to taller buildings. We agree that there are few, if any, examples of five-story buildings, but we are promoting a forward-thinking concept. While we're trying to recreate the past with our town green New England village organizing concept, we need to incorporate to the plan ideas and models to contemplate and embrace the future. You and others have raised issues about traffic noise on Route 114 and noise coming from college events across the street. And the very minimum taller buildings between you and these sources of noise will make for a much better sound barrier. Finally, while the mill buildings you have shown are five stories tall, we believe that they, there are ways to design five-story buildings that are not imposing in scale and massing. We hope to have an opportunity to discuss further with you how this can be accomplished in a design charrette or some other mechanism where we have, would have an opportunity to put our proposed buildings in a more favorable light. To Mary Ann's concern, also the pictures are on page 22, 23, 24. These discussions are ongoing. The board, I think, has certainly mentioned concerns about five-story buildings, both in terms of density, also in just the sheer number of people, also in terms of this appearances within the town in comparison to town, other town buildings. You know, we had discussions on prior projects about not thinking five-story buildings were appropriate, that four or three stories in different situations were more appropriate. So those discussions are ongoing. Obviously, nothing is definitive until a plan is fully presented and until it's voted on in town meeting and also voted on here at the board. We're still going through that. I, I think I'd also like to hear some point where we are in terms of, Gene, the word escaping me, but for visuals or models.
Yep, so I'm waiting to hear back. Mike suggested that he has a couple of alternatives to a scaled model, but.
So could, yeah, Mike, want to tell us about what you guys are thinking? I really would like to see something of how this would look if we have five-story buildings. How this would look if we have four-story buildings, both from on-campus and from off. And what are the best ways to, what can we do to visualize that?
You know, I, I, I think we should do a balloon test at a minimum. I don't, you know, or just even put a crane up there and look at it from all sides, you know? I mean, that would be the, I think, the simplest way to do it.
And it is one of our tried and true methods, is the balloon test?
I mean, yeah, you know, problems with the wind, but you could put those things up forty-odd feet and, you know, just so, so you could say, so.
What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea, honestly. One thing that we, you know, we've, we've discussed it internally with our design team pretty extensively. We've talked about a physical model, which, you know, in some respects and in some cases is really helpful. In this case, it would be very difficult to do just because of its size, just because of the whole 76 acres and the scales that we would have to be at. But we, we've also looked at some alternatives like a, sort of a fly-through digital model where we could give a really good idea of, of scale and how people would actually experience, you know, moving through the site and see these buildings. Our architect has actually had some really great success on similar projects, going through a similar process, utilizing tools like that. So I think that that's, that's what we're leaning towards at this point and something that we would be looking to develop in the next month or so.
Well, can we start with a balloon test? I mean, that's pretty, pretty simple and basic, right? Let's, let's.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's throw that balloon up there. Let's get down to the property and let's see it. And maybe we'll need more after that, but at least we could get some of the five-story buildings or some of the four-story and layout, you know, on the plan, and it gets us down there too, so.
Yeah.
I think let's, let's, can we try to shoot for maybe the end of May to do a balloon test? Would that be feasible, Gene, on your end?
Yeah, the plan about meetings, May 18th, but you would think add, add a meeting maybe the week after.
Yeah, yeah, my, end of May, would you think that's enough time to get that together? Alright, so let's look, let's look to do that for the end of May to get a balloon test. Weather should be good by then. We'll have done the fiscal impact. Well, maybe we'll have talked about the, the walking path and maybe then we can get a good sense of some of these heights and what people are comfortable with and what doesn't look right.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay. Number 20, Earl Cook. Dear board members, my name is Earl Cook and I live at 82 Berkeley Road with my wife and son. We have lived here for almost 20 years. As you are aware, neighbor of mine named Jeffrey Arlec has written to you with his concern about the redevelopment of Royal Crest area. He has gone as far as creating a Facebook page called Community Concerns for Royal Crest Development of what he sees as the concerns for our neighborhood. I was a member of this page for a brief time until I saw the content he was posting. The group pages are full of inflammatory pictures and statements, misleading statements and outright lies. Quite often, there are remarks that disparage the development, the process, and the various town boards that oversee the project. There is even a former planning board member involved in this group. The whole time that I was a member, I never saw any constructive criticism or suggestion. Some of, some of what he mentioned to you are valid concerns. That being said, I would like to mention what I see as some of the concerns and actually offer some suggestions that might address the issues. Some of these have already been addressed with Greg from Royal Crest and others are ideas that I thought of after our meeting. One, security. Some people are concerned that new construction and larger population will mean that people will use the woods bordering Berkeley Road and Royal Crest as a pass-through to gain access to our neighborhood for whatever reasons, reasons suits them. I mentioned to Greg that a wall of some kind could be built along Berkeley roadside of the complex to discourage this from being done. I also believe that a wall of six or eight feet tall would help to quiet down the noise from the parking lots and roads near the townhouses and Berkeley Road areas. This wall would also act as a screen from headlights as cars access the parking lots and townhouse surface roads. The response from Trinity, we agree and look forward to working with our neighbors on mitigating measures at the property line to work to screen views, noise, and prevent access to all inappropriate areas. Again, good that we agree. I'd really like to see this on a plan. Sounds like a really good idea.
Yes.
So let's get an updated plan with that. Drainage. Some neighbors on the odd side of Berkeley Road have said that they experienced flooding during heavy rains. From looking at the proposal, I noticed some water features on the Berkeley roadside of the plans. Greg told me that these are not added features, but are drainage features that are already in place. My suggestion was to expand these areas so that they are joined and to extend them so that it features similar to a moat, thus giving the rain more room to collect and drain rather than collecting above ground. I would also think that the wall mentioned above would help stop water from the Royal Crest development from adding to the water collecting in the wooded buffer area. Further, I would suggest that all the paved areas of budding Berkeley Road be graded so that the rainwater in those areas would be directed away from the perimeter and if the drains built into the paved areas. Trinity's response, we agree. As you well imagine, these are existing regulated wetlands and our abilities to alter them is somewhat limited. Nevertheless, our civil engineers and landscaped architects are designing the stormwater infrastructure to keep all stormwater on our site and void any impact on the surrounding areas. Existing stormwater regulations require us to only accommodate approximately eight acre feet of water. Our plan are actually to install a system to accommodate more than three times that amount far and above, beyond regulation to ensure that there will be no impact from drains to our neighbors. Light pollution. Neighbors on Berkeley Road have expressed apprehension about the possibility of light shining through and over the trees serving as a buffer zone. I would suggest that any lights that are added to the Berkeley roadside of the development be no higher than the surrounding tree line. I would think that in the spring and summer, this would take care of much of the light issues. When the leaves are down, the issues will still crop up, so I would further suggest that any lighting near the tree line be pointed away, having some kind of deflector that will help direct the light away. I know the light poles closer to Berkeley Road be lower than the other light poles in the parking lot and paved areas. We discussed that earlier, and I believe Trinity agreed with the sentiment of those comments and the heights. Some neighbors have expressed concern that buildings in the Merrimack College development area will be, allow occupants to see into their backyards and houses. I would think that the tree buffer zone would alleviate some, if not all, of that issue, but I suggest the nearest building, building to Berkeley Road be no higher or minimum above the tree line. Trinity says, we agree and noted, we place taller buildings closer to Route 114 with buildings stepping down in scale and height as they get close to the neighborhood and even then maintaining a wide landscape buffer. Well, I'm sure that there are other items that will come up along the way. I have just a couple of other items that I can think of right now. I, I have seen a couple of renderings and one there are clearly tennis courts, a pool, and a part of a walking path at the upper end of the development that borders homes on Berkeley Road. In my thinking, these are design elements that could cause concern for the neighborhood, neighboring properties. My suggestion is they are moved further away from the perimeter. Maybe some of the townhouses in the middle of property be removed and a central recreation area for tenants be placed there. Maybe what is labeled TH4C would be a more suitable location. These components would bring the public in close contact with the houses at the end of Berkeley Road and would add a noise component as well, especially after dark. I think the walking path that appears close behind homes be eliminated. I also mentioned to Greg that the developer would consider a refurbishment of the former toddler playground ball fields of the Franklin School. I realize the change is hard, but also inevitable for Royal Crest. My family has walked through the development many times and there's known people who have lived there. We came to the conclusion a few years ago that change was way overdue. I would like to see the property redeveloped so that parts of it would benefit the whole community of North Andover. Looking at the plans, I see that some of the features that have been included will benefit us all, but I personally think that the scope of the project should be downsized a little. Some of the buildings that they plan to build would make them pretty much the tallest buildings in town and totally add a character for the part of the town. Some of the large developments in town are built in areas where the topography disguises their height. Unfortunately, that is not the case here, being that the entire Royal Crest development is built on relatively flat land and the surrounding building outside of Royal Crest are mostly one story high. Four and five-story buildings would really be pronounced in their appearance no matter how well they are designed. Thank you for the time to read my concerns and suggestions. If I can clarify anything, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Earl Cook Jr., 82 Berkeley Road. Comment, we have taken note of these suggestions and other, and look forward to working with our neighbors on tweaks to the plans. Mr. Cook also adds, my wife and I were discussing the height issue of the building, especially the Merrimack dorms. People are freaking out when they hear the nearest dorm to Berkeley Road will be four stories high. I was looking at the building height of the apartments that are there now and suddenly they are approximately four stories tall. The apartments in the buildings take up three stories and the peaked roofs would add, what I guess would be about another story, bringing the total height to be about the level of a four-story building. Maybe someone could ask Trinity to have a scale model together, showing the actual heights of building in comparison to what is there now. This would also give people a much more realistic idea of what sightlines would be for them and into their yards. So again, I think, I think that's actually a great reason for the balloon test is comparison not only to, comparison to what's there now. I think that would be a great thing, so I think we'll, great, very good comments from Earl. Oh, wait, Earl's got another one. Alright, one more. If you remember, I previously voiced some of my concerns of my neighborhood and offered some of my solutions. I've been looking at the design of the planned dorm buildings from Merrimack College. I would suggest that the whole building complex be rotated 180 degrees so the large opening is facing the grass town square versus facing the dorm parking lot. My thinking is that any noise generated in the dorm quad would be funneled out of the large area between the buildings. The current plan shows that to be toward Berkeley Road. My suggestion would funnel the noise away from that area and towards the larger open area of the town square. Also, the realignment of the builders would tie the Merrimack dorm more to the redevelopment area instead of isolating it. This realignment would mean that the building closest to Berkeley Road would be five stories high. I would suggest these buildings be no higher than the tree line as outlined in my previous letter. Instead of realigning the buildings, my other thought would be to join two buildings together, thereby eliminating the large open area and limiting the noise leakage from the dorm quad that reaches Berkeley Road. Merrimack could use this additional space for rooms, study space, or just open space. This would also make it possible for students to access either building more easily without going outside. It would also be my suggestion that any dorm space on the Berkeley roadside have no open windows or balconies to further reduce the noise from reaching a budding neighbor. In either case, I would suggest that no large openings be planned on the Berkeley roadside of the dorm building. Further, I suggest that any dorm room or public space in the dorm buildings have no opening windows or balconies on the Berkeley roadside of the building. Concerns about the student housing portion of our plan have been noted, and we are closely looking at the massing and orientation of the building to address those concerns. Finally, I noticed that the plans make call for a parking structure or structures. I would recommend that accommodations be made for bus stops in the structures in case changes are made to the MVR TA routing so that a bus stop could be included. The bus stops in the structures will allow commuters to have closer access to the cars and will allow shoppers to take buses without being subject to waiting in bad weather. Trinity agrees, and I know we've noted at past meetings that we would like MVTRA stops to be noted on the plans. I have a question about the dorms. Do we know if balconies are suggested for the dorm buildings?
We do not expect any balconies.
Okay, I'd like to talk about that with Merrimack. I think balconies and college students is not a good mix. I remember my, I, so I lived at Warren Towers in, at Boston University, which is one of the biggest, highest dorms in the country. And that the orientation they're like, they, I learned the word defenestration. So I didn't know that word beforehand, but yeah, when opening, significant opening of, I mean, windows can open, but they should be limited and balconies, college students. That, that, that shouldn't happen, so let's confirm that with Merrimack. No balconies. Okay, or Mr. Cook had, I thought, fantastic comments, constructive ideas, and was well put together and thought out. Very much appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay. All right. Rachel Parsons. I'm reaching out in regard to the Royal Crest project and the steps that will be taken for the neighbors to have an open conversation with the planning board. Is the only way to communicate our thoughts by sending an email to be read at the meeting. Several neighbors were wondering if we could have a meeting Zoom. They would allow for follow-up questions, allow for a conversation to take place instead of just emails. If this is already in place, thank you, and sorry I missed that detail. Great question, Rachel. It is not in place yet. It will, some sort of meeting, whether it's Zoom, whether it's outdoors, whether it's in person, whether it's some sort of combination thereof. Those will take place at some point. Still figuring out the details, again, working with what our regulations are from the state and from the town. But something along those lines will certainly occur because we, we share, as the planning board, we share that sentiment, that dialogue, an actual dialogue needs to happen. For now, emails, that will happen at some point. And we'll keep you posted when that's going to happen. The proponent, Trinity Financial, stating that they're using this website. It lists the website for public outreach and running Facebook ads to promote the site. They've used these ads to claim they've reached 2,000 residents, but there's no way to ensure people reaching the site are indeed residents. We respectfully ask the planning board to request that developer discontinue the use of this site permanently based on some of the following examples. And I think then there are some examples. I, I don't think it's the, I'm trying to figure out which are the examples. Page 30, 31, 32, 33. 34. I'm not sure, is, do we know, is 32, 34 another comment, or is that the example?
Yeah, so I'd have to check. So the examples aren't listed. CJ Gangee and others was its own submittal.
Okay.
So I can go back and look at this one.
Okay, we'll see if we can find, I, I, the, the planning board can't tell them what website to use. It's just not within our authority, but your concerns are certainly noted. CJ Gangee and others, the following website provides an updates tab. It provides a message to follow and subscribe for updates. It is dated November 17, 2020. This gives you an impression you'll be notified to participate in the approval process. That's in quotation marks. The North Andover Planning Board, which is integral to that approval process, subsequently held meetings on November 24, 2020, December 1, 2020, December 15, 2020, January 5, excuse me, 21, and January 19, 2021. Notifications regarding these meetings went out and no updates have been made to the site as would be warranted with the publication of new items such as the traffic report. I'm just going to pause there, Gene. Gene, can you give the, well, one, if you want updates, any, there's a town website that you can get to get updates from town about planning board meetings and other town meetings, correct?
Yes, so on our homepage, you can subscribe to our agendas.
Which homepage?
Town in North Andover.
Okay, so on the Town in North Andover homepage.
You can subscribe to any board's or commission's agenda.
Okay.
And when you get that agenda, I think almost every one of them now links to the information included in the meeting packet.
And what about the planning board folder for Royal Crest?
So there's a website page created on the Community and Economic Development website that links to all the information that's been coming, I won't say every single thing, but relevant information that's been coming before the planning board is all posted there.
Okay, so everything should be posted in one place on the website Gene mentioned. If you have any problems finding that or accessing that, feel free to email me or email Gene, and we'll direct you to it. But there is a centralized location. We have heard that concern. We've made that centralized location. I can't speak to the developer's website, but from the planning board perspective, information is there and available. If the developers wish to be helpful, this is, I'm continuing Mr. Genji's comments. Oh, no, I just lost it. Hold on. No, no, I'm coming back to it. I got that. Okay, page thirty. If developers wish to be helpful to town residents, they should refer residents to the planning board's agenda or just remove this farce outreach in its entirety. And then there's some more description about that. Say they have intentionally buried the data regarding the scope and scale of their proposed redevelopment. There's some information that Mr. Genji lists is not available on the website. And then there's some more comments about the website. Again, you can go to the developer's website. I encourage you to do so, but again, if you, any information that's been presented to the board is on our website as well. Okay, going to number twenty-five, Mary Lou Schallman. As an interested neighbor and in the absence of an opportunity for real-time dialogue with the Royal Crest developers, I continue to have questions. In particular, board repeatedly refers to the fact that zoning changes will be required for the development as proposed. I would appreciate answers to the following. In order for the project to be built as proposed, what changes to zoning will be required? Please specify changes including differences in allowable density setbacks height. If zoning does not change, how would the allowable development under current zoning be different? Please specify what would be needed to change in the current proposal, including reductions in height, number of units, and usage which would not be allowed. So the answer says, the Royal Crest team is working with town officials and staff to create a zoning overlay district proposal. The zoning will consider the entire project as a master plan and is created specifically to address the impacts from a mixed-use development such as the new Royal Crest. By working closely with the town now, the town gets much more input regarding all the manner of land use impacts. Design standards can be established, and the applicant has noticed of what limitations and/or standards they will be required. Ultimately, zoning overlay district will be voted on in a future town meeting. Let's see if we can get some more clarity on that. So, in order for the project to be built as proposed, what changes to zoning will be required? That's a little difficult to answer because what we're, we're not really suggesting that the zoning be amended, say, in the traditional way of, okay, a height is changed here or a setback is changed here. It would really be a whole new zoning for this proposal that establishes what the heights would be, what the setbacks would be, what the density would be, what the allowed uses would be. So it's not, it's not more, I wouldn't really say it's a zoning change, it's a whole new zoning for that parcel that would, and would really dictate as a plan what would be allowed and what would not be allowed, and that's what would be coming to town meeting would be, okay, these are the heights, these are the uses, these are the plans, and either town approves those plans or the town doesn't approve those plans. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, there's just so many. I mean, you couldn't individually list each one out. Parking requirements, we haven't gotten to that yet, but they could be different. There's just, it's a complete overhaul of the zoning.
Right, so in other places we've done, you know, zoning change, we've said, okay, we're changing this from fifty feet to forty feet, or we're changing the setback from a hundred feet to 200 feet. It's not really something we're able to kind of do here.
I think it's fair to say that the proposed zoning will permit much greater density than in the existing zoning and a greater variety of uses.
Yes, and I think the place to kind of look for that is the chart summary, and I think, but to that point, maybe, you know, at some point, if we get a proposed zoning, looking at what the difference is in setbacks, what the difference is in heights as allowed, I think those would be a good thing. We're just not quite, we're not there yet, that we don't just have, we don't have the answers to that yet, so we can.
As I've said in the past, it's not a one-to-one relationship. So Royal Crest, the floor area ratio allowed is .75 today, but exist is .24. And the reason is, it's not simply the ratio that applies, but it is handicapped by a maximum building height of only forty feet, eighteen, don't quote me in this, but eighteen units per building.
Twelve units per acre, and yeah, there's a bunch of things that are there.
That come into it, so it's not one-to-one. It's not, like, it used to be .75, and now Trinity's proposing .75, including parking structures, one-to-one ratio.
So there may not be, there may be some things that we really can't get good apples-to-apples comparisons, but I think when ultimately we come before the town with, if we do, you know, get to something that we're going to go, I think it would, wouldn't it be too hard to kind of say, okay, obviously we'll get the density, right, and the numbers? We're already working on those, but here's the maximal heights currently at Royal Crest, here's the maximal heights of buildings here, which ones they are. Here's the setbacks along the borders currently, here's the setbacks as proposed in the zoning. I mean, I think we can do that, we're just not there yet. Is zoning, yeah? Someone have a comment? Yes, yes, please, Peter, thank you.
So I really appreciate you looking to better clarify an answer to these questions. I don't think the answer provided was really responsive to the question. And I particularly liked your idea on how we might address this going forward, this question, but I want to make sure I understand what you were suggesting. So right now, we have that chart, which I think is called a program summary, that attempts to list changes. Number of cars coming in and out of the property today, projected number of cars going in and out of the property in the future, as an example. I think I, what I heard you say, suggest was, we would be able to do a similar before and after comparison on that program summary that, for example, would show, under current zoning, allowed height is X number of feet. If this were to pass the town, the future zoning would allow height X plus Y feet, but not just height. Density setbacks, multiple areas of the difference in zoning if passed by the town. If that's what you were suggesting, that those type of explanations be put in an understandable way on the program summary, then I think it's a very good idea of before and after zoning on that summary. But I wanted to ask, is that what you were suggesting?
So in essence, yes, I wasn't, I hadn't thought it through of whether it would be on the same summary or whether it would be its own chart, but yes. But I, but to add to that, I think there are three things. What's allowed by zoning, maybe even four. What's allowed by zoning now? What's actually there now, right? Because zoning may say you can have certain heights, but what is the actual heights? Zoning may say you can have certain setbacks, but maybe something's grandfathered and it is, it's a lesser setback, or maybe even though the setback's fifty feet, the closest building is a hundred feet. So what's allowed by zoning now? What's currently actually there now? What would be allowed by zoning? And then what would be proposed in the actual project, right? Because maybe zoning allows for 55 feet, but the actual height is proposed at 50 feet. And whether that's on the same program summary on our different chart, I hadn't really got thought to that, but that's.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Tom. We can't hear again. I don't know if the microphones could get moved one more time. Got really bad.
We could hear you for most of that, but the last third or so been pretty heavily. Kelly, can you understand me?
You sound better, Peter, but it's still a little garbled, but better than the room.
Well, let me just try to express, hey, Tom, I think I understood most of what you said. I think that's a very good idea. I understand the four categories of comparison, and it certainly would be okay to have it on a separate chart. And could I ask that your suggestion be included in the minutes?
Okay. Make sure that it is when we review them, okay? But, thank you. Okay. Where are we at? Oh, we're close, right? Okay, well, what do people want to do? Do we want to power through and finish this or save the rest? We have about five more pages.
So I'll say, three additional comments came in at the last meeting just before tonight's meeting. Trinity provided responses for those, so I need to update this to include.
Okay, so let's stop here, because maybe we'll get a couple other comments too after tonight's meeting. So we're on page thirty-five. We're going to start, we'll finish up with Jim Salvatore's notes, comments. We'll do those, and he added one from last meeting, and he added that comes in tonight, and that'll finish up our general discussion, and then that'll be good because then we can go into our fiscal discussion and then take, after that, go to comments on fiscal. Okay. Jim, Mike, your group, anything else you want to add for tonight?
No, thank you so much for giving us the time. We really appreciate it.
No, I think that is good. Let's be ready to have a really significant discussion about the fiscal impact studies with our peer reviewers next week.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Back to our agenda. Before we do minutes, Gene, do you just want to mention the program on Saturday?
Yep, so the town has been working on a Route 125 corridor study. We have hired a consultant team to work with us. It proposes to look at many facets of the corridor, including zoning, land use that exists, land use that people would like to see, roadway, safety, all kinds of things. And so we're meeting to do a walk on Saturday. It's open to the public. It's been posted on the website. We are meeting at 10 o'clock at Mad Maggie's on Osgood Street. So we ask that if people do attend, please park to the rear of Mad Maggie's lot. They don't open till noon, but we are meeting there at 10. We'll walk that general area, then we're going to visit two other sites. And we don't anticipate it'll last much longer than noon, but we're trying to get a better information, so we send it to the French Farm Neighborhood Group to try to get residents as well as some key stakeholders along the corridor.
Okay, so I encourage anyone who's available, if you can make it out, to do so. Can we get a motion to approve the March 16th and April 6, 2021 meeting minutes?
Still moved.
Motion made by Peter. Can we get a second, please?
Second.
Second by John. All right, we'll do, let's start with Aaron. I'll take that as a yes. All right, can we hear?
Aye.
Peter votes aye. Aaron voted aye. And John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, minutes approved. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Hey, Tom, just one quick item?
Yes, please.
Could we consider adding to a future agenda a status on the watershed plan update?
Okay. Gene, when would be a good time to add that?
We could add it to the next meeting.
All right.
Full agenda, if you want to wait till the 18th, it might be better.
Let's do the 18th. Let's do May 18th, because the fiscal impact stuff's going to take a while. We'll put it on the agenda for May 18th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Still moved. Second.
Motion made by John, second one by Peter. Peter?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Aaron, if you're there? I'll take that as a yes. All right, motion approved, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.